All right, folks, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Jersey Village City Council. The time is now 7:01 PM. It's Monday, November 27, 2023. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum present?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Which brings us to invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Sherri Shepherd.
Please bow your head. Dear Emily, Father, you are such an awesome God, and we have so much to be thankful for. As we head into this holiday season, we ask that you continue to bestow your blessings upon us. We ask for your protection and your safety over our friends and our families, within the city and without. And, Lord, we ask for your guidance and your wisdom tonight as we all work together for the greater good of this community. In all these things, we ask in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you, Councilmember. That now brings us to presentations. We've got a presentation of life-saving awards to Officer Morena, Sergeant Scott, Corporal Brodus, and Officer Trevino. Chief Riggs.
Mayor, Council, good evening. It's an honor and a privilege to get to present this award tonight to these officers. But before I get to the presentations, I would like to read the summary of the events that happened back in September. On Thursday, September 14, at approximately 3:30 AM, Officer Morena was flagged down by a customer at Polar Express. This concerned customer informed Officer Morena that the store clerk appeared to be in distress and unresponsive. Officer Morena promptly informed dispatch to mark him out on a welfare check. He quickly realized the urgent need for medical assistance and requested EMS and additional officers to assist him. Responding to the call were Sergeant Scott, Corporal Brodus, and Officer Trevino. Upon arrival, the officer found the clerk locked inside the cashier's safety booth, laying face down on the counter, showing no signs of responsiveness. He was experiencing convulsions, and bodily fluids were visibly coming from his nose and his mouth. Despite their best efforts, the officers were unable to gain any response from him through the glass partition. With concern that his life was in imminent danger, the officers made the decision that they could not wait for a key holder. Corporal Brodus retrieved a breaching tool from his patrol vehicle. And with the assistance of Sergeant Scott, they gained entry into the safety booth. Once inside, the team assessed his condition and determined that CPR was needed. His condition was deteriorating, and his complexion had turned blue. Realizing the severity of the situation and potential for an overdose, Sergeant Scott retrieved his medical kit, which contained Narcan spray, from his patrol vehicle. Officers carefully positioned him on the floor, and Officer Trevino initiated chest compressions, tirelessly continuing for several minutes. Sergeant Scott and Officer Trevino administered the Narcan spray, and it appeared that he was gradually regaining consciousness, but not entirely out of danger. Officer Trevino continued chest compressions until the arrival of EMS. EMS detected a pulse and continued providing critical medical attention. He was transported to nearby hospital for further medical care due to the suspected fentanyl overdose. The swift decision and actions of these officers has unquestionably played a key role in saving his life. Their dedication is a true testament to the noble profession they have chosen to serve, bring an honor to the Jersey Village Police Department, and themselves. Please join me in congratulating these officers for their selfless deed in saving a life.
Congratulations again to our officers. I'm always, this is probably the best part of any meeting, is being able to recognize that sort of service to our community. So, thank you again. That brings us to citizens' comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the City Council will be heard at this time, in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the City Council. The first comment card I have is from Jim Fields.
Mayor and City Council, my name is Jim Fields. I live at 16413 St. Hillier, and I want to thank you for allowing me to contribute to tonight's meeting. First of all, I want to say thank you for the sidewalk at the corner of, I've been, I've lived here for 30 years, I had to look up what street it was, at Village, where the veterinarian is. I think it's Village, and the other one is Parkway Drive. I cheated, I just looked it up. So, anyway, thank you again. That makes it very nice, as I think encourages people to exercise, because you can walk to Whataburger, at least that's what I do. Thank you again for that. Also, I want to thank you for taking care of the jungle on Seattle Slough. Thank you very much. It was overgrown so bad you couldn't walk on the sidewalk. It's now walkable. Thank you very much, Mayor. I want to move on to code enforcement. I want to say it's great that we are making progress. You can see some of the vehicles are gone. And I want to thank Councilwoman Cray. You're also getting involved, you're saying you have reported some, so we're making progress here. But I had, the code enforcement officer called me up about something different, and it looks like there might be some confusion on what a junk vehicle is. So, I'm gonna read it here, it's real simple. It's a motor vehicle that displays an expired license plate or does not display a license plate. So, hopefully that, but she was saying that the judge throws the cases out because they don't meet that criteria. That's her words, I'm not, you know. So, I think there's a little confusion there. Hopefully, you know, the city manager can talk to her, or if I'm wrong, maybe get back with me, but that's what I read from the, from the, off the website for the codes. And transparency, I really think this is very important, Mayor. The meetings we're having for the tours too, which does include some apartment complexes, should be open to the public. I can't think of any reason why it should not be, because these are public monies being spent. And it just puzzles me why you would have a meeting like that, that has a huge impact on our society behind closed doors. What possibly could be that sensitive? If it's that sensitive, then there's something, there must be something wrong. And I think that is it, and I hope you guys had a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim. Next comment card I have is from Kim Clemens.
Good evening, everybody. I was gonna thank the police for being here, but they're already left, so thank you, Chief Riggs. You do a great job, we're gonna miss you. I wish you well in your new adventures of retirement. Isn't that coming up?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna miss you. Absolutely. Just some, you know, some feedback from you guys after the special session last week, interested in hearing if y'all have had any conversations and what might have come from that. Also, regarding the water meters, I've had some conversations with other people from the city of Houston. I hear there's a supply chain issue with the current meters that we're using, whether it's new meters or spare parts. Has that been discussed within the city? That might be an Austin question. And then also, I know that the KPRC news telecast was brought up last week. There was a special that was done by Amy Davis called "Drained." I didn't know if anybody on council has seen that special, and are there any correlations and your thoughts as to how it relates to our current issues within the city? Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Next comment card I have is from Jeff Kopecchi.
Jeff Kopecchi, 16125 Delosier. I heard, I don't know if it's true or not, but I heard y'all are considering on removing the sidewalk inside of Carol Fox Park. Now, the Carol Fox Park, the history of that is, is that park was built by donations, and it was built by donated labor. And I know the handprints and whatever else is on the sidewalk inside there, you know, the fact of the matter is, those people paid to have that put in there. And some of those were kids at the time, have moved back into the village and are raising their kids here. So, I don't see erasing history. I think it should stay there, I don't think it should be removed. Now, I may be premature on this, but I was told that they are considering on removing it, because they don't like the way they look. So, I don't know for sure, I'm just bringing it up what I think, and I think that we don't, we don't need to erase history. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Just as a statement of fact, I don't believe there's been any discussion regarding those sidewalks at all, at least not on council. So, I'm, I do, I do appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Mayor, I will say that the Parks and Rec Committee has talked about the condition of the sidewalks overall, and as we look to expand the stuff at Carol Fox Park, making sure that, that it, so those, making sure those sidewalks are preserved in the best way possible. Some of them are not likely able to be preserved, but trying to make sure that we honor the history there is something that the Parks and Rec Committee has discussed.
Okay, that's good to provide some context. Thank you.
And I'll reply with a statement of fact. Any replacements that were being considered was just due to the deterioration of specific ones. If there was a sidewalk intact, it was, that, those weren't being discussed of anything, and it was just how to honorably fix a pallet that does have a lot of history associated, and what is the best way to go about that. But that was just the discussion, it had nothing to do with the overall look, if anything, it was just preservation.
Great, thank you very much. The, the last comment card I have here is from Kimberly Anau.
My name is Kimberly Anau, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my 26th installment, Jersey Village spent 1995 evaluating the safety and effectiveness of streets, utilities, and technology. Although I did not have the pleasure of being a Jersey Village Falcon when I graduated high school in 1995, I did spend the year dancing to the Remembrance, "I'll Be There For You." I reevaluated my wardrobe after watching Clueless, and I chuckled at the advice from Frasier Crane's call-in radio show. An advisory committee formed with nine members appointed for the likely Gulf Bank Road Expansion from Beltway 8 to 290, with consideration for the right-of-way, zoning, street type, development probabilities, and buffer zones. Moving the street further south to reduce speeding and traffic noise was possible, but due to the closeness of that traffic noise, this previously annexed land could only be commercial, not residential, such as for patio homes. Mayor Schneider wanted to increase citizen involvement with a better variety of committees and for council members to assist as liaisons. An invitation for residents to apply for a committee would be in the star. The Parks and Landscaping Committee recommended construction of a nine-hole flying disc frisbee golf course around the perimeter of Clark Henry Park as part of an Eagle Scout project at an under-budget cost of about $150. A historical plaque for Clark Henry Park will be installed on a to-be-constructed brick wall viewable on Ecuador. There was consideration of using a tract of undeveloped land at Senate and 290 for activities such as softball. The city attorney reiterated that public parks can be used by anyone, regardless of residency. A cable television company asked for a franchise to operate in the city for 15 years, which would provide a second option for residents. Another cable television provider advised of new fiber optic technology to be more reliable in bad weather, better picture quality, and more available channels. The fiber is installed in backyard easements 100 feet from houses, and it was confirmed the cable industry is allowed the use of public rights-of-way. JVPD was selected to receive a $75,000 grant for three years from the COPSSFAS program, with current officer Sandy Riggs assigned the community-oriented service work, and a reserve officer was paid for duties per the grant. Officer Riggs received a Crime Prevention Officer of the Quarter Award from the Cyfair Chamber of Commerce. The Northwest Optimist Club fundraised $3,000 for the fire department to purchase Jaws of Life equipment, with Cyfair Hospital matching donation funds of an additional $3,000. The police department held a golf tournament at Jersey Meadow and presented $900 to the fire department for this very important equipment. The bid to purchase a new ambulance was approved, which will have an automatic air dump for loading patients, similar to the hydraulic lift on Metro buses, for a cost of $101,762, and to sell the current ambulance next year. Crawl's Bad Storm Sewer Drainage Improvement was included in a certificate of obligation for capital projects, along with the new ambulance, and remodeling of the old police station and City Hall, which had a leaky flat roof. Plating and fence discussions for patio homes called Wildwood continued for the green space on Ecuador at Philippine. Warner Cable sponsored a hometown heroes program to select a resident who has made a positive impact on not just the community, but to children also. Councilwoman Arubey nominated Frank and Sandra Marr for their dedication to foster children for over 20 years and their work in the community. Mayor Schneider presented a humanitarian award plaque to Mr. Marr, who said he believes that if we all do a little volunteer work, such as on committees or coaching, it makes for a much nicer town to live in, and they are very proud to live in Jersey Village. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kimberly. I know I've said this before, but it seems like the more things change, the more they stay the same, right? It just goes to show, it's true. All right, that brings us to the city manager's report. Austin Bleece.
Mayor, councilors, the report's in front of you. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the city manager from councilmembers? Okay, no questions. That brings us to the consent agenda. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for consideration during the regular agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I don't wish to, excuse me, don't wish to remove any items, but I did have a question for the city manager about a couple of the items. We're applying for two FEMA grants, I think that's fantastic, good use of resources. When would we expect to hear, hear back? I know that they may not come into fruition for a couple of years, but...
So, for this current cycle that they awarded grants for, the planning grants were announced back in June, I believe it was, and the home elevation grants were announced in the latter part of August. So, if they keep that same timeline, which I assume they would, we'd hear next June and August on these two applications.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anyone else in, anyone else in council want to remove an item or have a question about an item? If not, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I would like to remove number three.
Okay, number three will be removed and considered at the top of the regular agenda. Does any other councilmember wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion at this time on the remaining consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of F3.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? Consent agenda as modified passes unanimously. So, we will move to, or we will now take up what was item F3, Consider Resolution Number 2023-59, and this is a long one. Authorizing and approving membership of the city served by CenterPoint Gas for the purpose of protecting the interests of the city and its citizens with respect to CenterPoint matters. Further suspending the December 4, 2023, effective date of the statement of intent of CenterPoint Energy Resources Corporation, DBA CenterPoint Energy Intex, and CenterPoint Energy Texas Gas to change rates in the Texas Division, to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates, finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company. Authorizing participation with the city served by CenterPoint Gas, hiring legal and consulting services to negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation and appeals, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law. Requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel. Austin Bleece, city manager.
Mayor and councilors, as a member of the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities, which the city is a member, there's 18, 20 cities that are all members of that coalition. We work with the law firm Lloyd Goslink, Rochelle and Townsend, to represent the coalition in these matters. This is a fairly standard thing that we do annually, and so this would just allow them to represent us before the commission in this issue.
Okay, discussion amongst council on this item.
I just wanted further clarification. I thought that was what it was, but just wanted to make sure.
Feels that we did this more recently than last December, am I right?
Every April or May, there's a different topic that comes up, and we can delay the implementation of the rates by 45 days, I believe it is, so that's in the spring. This one's every November-ish.
Any further discussion amongst council on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2023-59.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item G1. Consider Resolution Number 2023-63, appointing a member to serve in vacant position two of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee for the term beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2025. Lori Cootie, city secretary. Lori Cootie, City Secretary.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, this, on this item, the appointee that was appointed back in, I believe, September or October, had some things come up and is no longer able to serve in that position, so she tendered her resignation. This is to fill that spot. It will be for the term that begin October 1, 2023 and ended September 30, 2025. And there were some applications included in your packet, and I did want you to note that we do have the requirements of a real estate development or a building industry person already appointed, so you don't really need to consider that.
Okay, great, thank you, Lori. Discussion amongst council on this item.
I find it very refreshing and exciting that we have two folks that have applied for the boards that are relatively new to the community. So, that's, that's great that they're jumping right in, and so I would like to recommend Ben Melson. He has an interesting background as well in political science, and so I think he would be an interesting fit.
I'm gonna second that notion of having some new people who have been here less than six months, willing and able to jump on in. I know Ben Melson sits on another board, so I'm gonna throw in the hat Daniel Alvarado. He is a product analyst at Schlumberger, and he's skilled in project and resource management. And I believe he's already on a board as well. And I know...
I was...
So, I just wanted to bring to council's attention that there was a late application that was mailed to you. Okay.
I will third the observation of new applicants. There is a person, the longest-tenured applicant that has not served on a board, applied for back in July of '22. I do not believe he's on other boards and looks pretty well-qualified as well, along with the other members who have applied. So, in the absence of a distinguishing remark, I will go, or distinguishing, I guess, endeavor on the application. I'm using the wrong word there, but I'm gonna mention Edward Locke.
He's on Parks and Rec, right? No.
Oh, well then.
Golf, sorry.
Wow.
We've got an involved group, I love this. No, that's, it's a good problem to have.
It's kinda difficult sometimes because when people send in their application, they apply for several, and so I keep, keep bringing them up if they haven't been chosen for that particular committee yet.
Okay, then I'm gonna talk about Bill Smothers looking on his, he's an alternate. I know he does sit on a board. Yes, he's an alternate. Ben Melson sits on a board. Does Bridget Martinez sit on a board? Then we have, she hasn't, yeah, she was on Parks and Rec. I didn't know if she was on any other thing. And Cynthia Copenitz? I'm gonna, sorry about that, Cynthia. Is she on any board?
No.
So, Bridget Martinez is not on any other boards, correct?
That's correct.
Or Cynthia?
The application was attached to the email. I'll just say, this is a nice problem to have because there are some very, very qualified people that have applied.
How about Bridget Martinez?
I was about to say Cynthia.
I like Cynthia.
And my only distinguishing between the two would be that, is that Cynthia has not served, had the opportunity, and if we'd like to keep getting people who have, maybe that's a, that's a way to do that.
Well, she is very involved in the JVSO and would connect us to the senior citizen group within the community, so...
Yeah, I think, I think both are, are very active, but Cynthia's certainly plugged into a lot of different volunteer efforts already, so I'm gonna nominate, move, we approve Cynthia Copenitz.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. So, that brings us to item G2. Consider Ordinance Number 2023-28, Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jersey Village, Texas, Chapter 70, Utilities by amending certain articles and sections of Chapter 70 to provide for amendments to water and wastewater rate schedules, providing a severability clause, providing for repeal, providing a penalty as provided by Section 1.8 of the code, and providing an effective date. Austin Bleece, City Manager.
Mayor, councilors, back in August, when the utility rate ordinance was adopted, there were some clerical errors made that caused the rate structure to not match what was recommended in that study. The day that we found the error, we sent out communications to make people aware of what happened. What happened was, for the water rates, the monthly base fee for water was correctly updated. However, the consumption rates were not adjusted, leading to lower charge in the November 2023 bills. For the sewer rates, the monthly base fees were updated, but the consumption table rates had been inaccurately marked, causing the confusion. The consumption rates for fiscal '24 were mistakenly labeled as fiscal '21, and that resulted in higher current consumption rates than recommended. So, preliminary review of all the accounts that were billed shows that for the month, customers, both residential and commercial, were overbilled by a total of $12,436. For context, we billed about $586,000, almost $587,000 last month. For the average residential customer, they paid $6.12 more than they should have for the monthly bill. It should be noted also that some of the residents paid less than they should have. The corrected rates are included here for adoption by the council. As part of that, staff recommends that we recalculate the October bills at these rates. Those that paid already and have paid more, those that have paid already more than they should have been would receive a credit on their next bill that comes in December. There's nothing residents would have to do in that process, the bill would be recalculated automatically for everybody. For those that were underbilled, we're proposing to not collect that balance and let that error remain in their favor. If there was a balance due, we would not charge late fees as per the ordinance that is in front of council here. So, the ordinance attached has the correct amounts as recommended in the rate study. Making, moving forward, we've made it easier for the correct information to be copied from future rate studies straight into the ordinance, making it easier to update and reduce the chance of human errors such as this one. City staff will communicate the issue to the residents via the weekly newsletter that goes out via email, the website, social media posts, and of course, information that goes out with the December utility bills as well. I also want to thank the residents for the patience and understanding as we've worked through the issue. We recognize the inconvenience this has cost, and we appreciate their understanding.
Okay, discussion amongst council on this item.
I appreciate that if they underpaid that you're not going to recoup that, and I also appreciate that it was caught quickly and it was not too excessive, $6 on average. Although it was a mistake, it's something that is a little bit easier to swallow.
And thank you for putting in a process that will hopefully catch this more quickly next time. I think continuous improvement's always a, always a good thing to strive for.
Well, I also think that we know that we are working to get more transparent information on water bills, you know, specific rates, your meter numbers. We've requested a lot of stuff that you feel that, I would think most of us feel that need to be on your bills specifically for you to see first. I find myself curious about if, I'm getting a lot of complaints, what I've been seeing from residents are complaints about the sewer charges, that the sewer has gone from being the average billing from the three lowest months of the year typically to the, to what you're actually using, based off your legitimate usage. And I think it's worth, definitely worth the conversation, because originally it sounded like, it sounded like a very fair plan to me, because if you're using the water, you should pay for the water. I mean, that makes, like, that makes sense, black and white, when you see that written down. But I also feel that it's, it seems excessive for, for some people. And then others, it doesn't seem to make a difference at all. And so, it seems, and I go back and forth on how much of this is part of the, if we're having an issue with meter, like where the, like where the line is, like where, because I feel like some of this stuff is kinda clouding over each other.
I agree, and I feel like we're seeing the biggest impact is for those residents who have one meter, and they're really paying the sewer extra fees for water that really isn't going down the sewer. And I hear that the emails have been constructive and kind, and I appreciate all of you guys who have written, written us, but I feel like we've, we've got to come up with a plan of getting a more fair and accurate second meter available to the average citizen at not a huge cost, $2,000. I don't think that's realistic. I don't know how we would come up with that, but I would, I would like to have an open discussion on what we could do to get the second meter, because these, some of these people with one meter are paying an unfair proportion of water that really isn't going to be treated anywhere. But they also, you know, to shell out that two grand to make it even is a viable option either. So, that was my main goal today, was to see if we could come up with a program to help those with a second meter. So, it was a little bit more of a fair averaging.
Is that something we'd want to consider as in a topic in the workshop?
I would love that.
I mean, certainly it's gonna have to be something that, we can't just make a change tonight, because there's gonna be a lot of other stuff that needs to be rebalanced along the way, but it seems like it would make the most sense to discuss it in the context of the workshop.
The biggest hurdle with that would be, we don't have staff that could do the taps that might be necessary for that type of thing. That would be hurdle number one.
I'm sorry, repeat that one more time?
We don't have the staff that could do the installation and the plumbing all associated with that, and that's, that's the largest cost in that whole process.
Yeah, yeah, I think it would be, the problem is that the, the cost of the actual meter is relatively small compared to the cost of the installation. Me personally, I was concerned about this when it was first brought up, and I frankly think the easiest solution, until we can think of, if there is a better solution, I'm happy to talk about it, but I think that, that the best short-term solution is to go back to the old method of calculating the sewer charges until we can figure out if there is something better out there to, to, to replace it.
And I don't necessarily think it's just the sewer charges. I think you also look at the fact that, you know, you, you go and buy the meter, let's say, let's say, and I'm gonna use the second meters as an example here, but you go buy the meter from the city, so you're already paying 300, right? So, you're paying $300 from the city, and then you're paying 23-something, 20, let's say, it's gonna, it's now going up to $23 every month for that meter that you already paid for on top of, you know, when we pay for our water, we're already paying, you know, there's the, what we pay for our water, and then there's our charge for the water. So, you know, you start adding that up between the two meters, your main meter and your second meter, you're already being hit with $47 of just having a meter on top of that. And especially in months, even if, even if those charges need to exist, especially in months when you're not using your meter, or let's say you buy your meter, and we've talked about this last time, it's sitting on your kitchen counter waiting for you to come up with the $2,500 to have it installed, you're being charged for that meter to just hang out.
So, you shouldn't be being charged if that meter's not installed, typically, and this, if this is not the case, we'll certainly look into it and make sure it's corrected, but I know in talking with Tare, and when the final inspection is completed by utilities and the building official to sign off on it, that it's in service and in use and the ground running, working, that's when that meter goes active. If that's not the case, if you can let me know with specifics, we'll, we'll fix that problem, because that shouldn't have happened. The other option with that is, if people are gonna shut off their irrigation systems for the winter, they can call in or email and say, hey, we're gonna turn ours off, can you inactivate my meter? And that would remove that meter from their bill for that month.
Is that information on our website for somebody to do, or on the bottom of their water bill explaining that you have that option?
We certainly can. I don't know if it's, if it's been out there in the past, we've not had as vigorous discussions on the topic as we've had recently, so...
Because I can tell you, I've, I've got a second meter, and I've never had that, I've never been aware that that was an option, because that would have been great when we had a leak last year.
And I understand we weren't gonna come to a specific ordinance or conclusion today, but the amount of emails I've received from you guys, I wanted to be able to just brainstorm some loose ideas. I think the workshop idea is gold. It's, if you've ever been to one, it is open discussion the entire time. It's a lot more dynamic and informal, and it's, it's really, really a great citizen interaction, if you can make time to come. It is a valuable, valuable experience, so I look forward to it. One other thing I would love to throw out in the workshop as just an idea, and this might solve a lot of the problems with the bills or some of the problems, because I agree with Jen, each, there's not one specific item. I think there was three or four things kind of married together that kind of came up together. But if there's a citizen that has an atypical spike in their bill, and then they come out and they want to, you know, contest it, and they, maybe having a program, if you have a one-off, there's not such a big penalty. I don't even know what that would look like. I'm just, like, loosely thinking of when you contest your house appraisal or something, that it wouldn't, because the plumbers are coming out, they're saying, no leak, no, no nothing, and then boom, there's another $1,000 bill for you. What if instead we had a, hey, I think this is a one-off, oopsie, or something's happening, can I contest this? And it's your one of the year that you get if you can answer some, like, like I said, I'm just loosely coming up with things in my brain, but that way you wouldn't have to call a plumber and do all of these, you know, analytics if it truly was just a, a one-off that many citizens seem to be having without really a rhyme or reason. Our...
I was gonna say, our biggest problem is that we have no supplier diversification, and that's not, I mean, it's impossible to at this point. So, our hands are tied with the City of Houston as being our main supplier for, for our water. And so, as they raise their rates, unfortunately, we have to turn around and raise our rates in order to break even. I know it was a big shock to me when I moved and built a house here 13 years ago, coming from a mud district where my monthly bill was $50 to a bill in the summertime that was higher than my electricity bill. So, I mean, I, summer, summer bills are regularly $300, so going from a $50 bill to a $300 bill was a big shock. I do think this is a valid issue that we need to address. We are working to schedule a working session so that we can have a more in-depth discussion. It's very difficult to have this kind of discussion and look at data and, you know, whiteboard things on the board, and so, you know, that session obviously is gonna be very valuable for us to, to, to walk through these things. But our biggest issue is being tied to the City of Houston, and at this point, we, we have no alternative.
There's a second issue. You raise a great point, and that's tied, the fact that cost of infrastructure has gone up at least three times of what it was in 2019. So, you know, it's common around Thanksgiving, you know, we just had, they say, what the price is and whether it's more or less of a turkey dinner than it was last year. Well, imagine you paid 29 cents a pound in 2019, or 29... Well, imagine you paid 29 cents a pound in 2019, or 29, you know, a dollar a pound in 2019, and now it's $4 a pound. Well, we see that at the grocery store with a lot of other items. Infrastructure is not like a grocery store. It's in the millions, so now we have to deal with that. We've budgeted for this year revenue of $5.7 million in terms of fees and services. So water, I believe that basically water and sewer and fees, roughly to spend anywhere from 4.7 to five, if not more than that, plus savings for capital improvements in the future coming years. Austin, and this can save this for the workshop maybe, do we know a breakdown of what that is, water versus sewer of that 5.7? And while you look, the reason I'm asking is circling back to using winter rates, we're still going to have to raise five point, roughly $5.7 million. So even if we go and use the usage from the four months, or is it three, of November, December, January, and February, that multiple, whether it's based on 6,000 gallons or your average use, is going to be a lot higher. There will be, quite frankly, for all of us, a significant amount attached to the sewer bill just because the city utility fund, which is a self-serving fund, right? It doesn't make a profit, it doesn't lose money, doesn't go from the general fund, doesn't go out to other funds, needs that amount.
So roughly 3.6 million is based on water and 2.1 is sewer. So that's a little bit of rounding in there, but that's, that's where, where that is. But you're absolutely correct. If we go to a sewer averaging, we would definitely want to look at the rates as a whole because that would necessitate a change in the water rate side of it. But the, the utility fund is solely for utility projects. The CIP, as you correctly mentioned, those projects are, are way more expensive now than they used to. Obviously, we do have the bond that was just passed, and that will help, but that also includes some debt service in, in those, those things as well. But we have a lot of infrastructure, water sewer pipes that are, you know, nearing 50 years old. And we've had issues on Tahoe, and we've had collapsed lines, and we have a few other areas where we know that we're going to be facing those issues soon, and, and these costs are expensive.
I saw the scopes out today looking, so we're looking to see what's.
Austin, I'm glad you bring up the bonds because we did, there was somebody reached out that said, hey, we passed the bonds, why aren't we just using some of that to offset the expenses? This is where the point comes up of having utility fund that it, what it takes and goes solely to our utilities. Our utilities are paid for solely by what comes into the utility fund. The bond, the bond isn't just free money, it's money that will be repaid from those revenues from the utility fund. The idea is it's, I think, safe to say generally cheaper to get ahead on, on maintenance and to replace things before they fail rather than to pay to patch something up after it fails. And the bond money definitely helps us to be able to get ahead of things, and that's going to be one of the biggest ways that we, we save some money. The other option, and one thing I was going to ask, is whether we, in the division between the water and the sewer, did, I assume that did not take into account the, obviously, it's still pending, I guess technically, but I know we are anticipating federal grant money of about a million dollars for the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, for, for our portion of the, or to cover a portion of our, our share there, correct. So, yeah, there's that since these rates, you know, the, since this happened, the lift station bid came in a little bit lower too, so there's, there's some things there. But I, I, I believe that our need for more maintenance and capital projects exceeds those, the amounts that we're saving in those pieces.
Yeah, and don't, and don't get me wrong, I'm not bringing that up for, to, to say that we don't have to spend as much. It's that we are still striving to find, find alternatives or ways to be able to save money and to keep these costs as low as we can. But at the end of the day, whatever the cost is, is going to be paid directly by those utility bills. No more, no less. It's not, it's not going towards parks or anything. We're not like a mud, a mutual utility district that might divide things up by a little bit of tax rate, a little bit of bill. It's 100% your utility bill goes towards that project, and that's it. So.
I agree. A lot of this is a great conversation for the work session. We should probably move forward the, the problem with, if we go back to sewer averaging, is we will have to recoup those funds some other way. And you're moving the charge from those that are using extremely high amounts of water to the average consumer. Is one thought. So I look forward to talking about that at a work session. Same may have a problem if I move to approve this.
We definitely, yeah, we definitely can. We, there, there, that'll be an interesting, that, that's why a work session is better for this, where we can really delve into the numbers. And I'm sorry, was that a motion? Or no, there's, there, I guess.
It was a, same may have a problem if I move forward.
Oh, sorry, I, I didn't quite catch whether you were making the motion or not.
And I, I did want to make mention that the workshop, some dates being thrown around are within the next two weeks. So it's, it's coming up pretty quickly. It's not going to be something kicked down, down the line too far.
I moved to approve ordinance 2023-28.
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes. That brings us to item G3. Wait, no, I made sure I got the right, oh, sorry. A discussion on the 2023 bond election and possible future bond elections. Austin Bleach, city manager.
Mayor and councillors, at the November election, the residents authorized two bonds, ones for streets, bridges, and ones for utilities. As such, the city staff has put an RFP for engineering services, so we can have a list of firms that can do this work that the city can contract with. Should be noted that we were going to put out this RFP no matter what, just as a good practice to refresh our, our list. But it's our goal to have a list of three to five companies that we can pre-qualify for projects. The Congo Street project is currently estimated to be ready for bid in February. Looking at a possible grant application, we can hopefully get to, or do to offset the gas, those costs. Not quite sure if we're going to be eligible for that. Other street road projects need to be engineered, which we'll have to have contracts. We'll bring those to council. As the parking pool did not pass, the council should probably discuss the what next steps, if any, to take on those items. Staff is working to get a list of the items we need to know that have to be worked on. I don't have that list in front of me here. However, we've seen each of the past few years, there's been unforeseen issues that have occurred at the pool that necessitated repairs. As we've said previously, it seems unlikely the pool would last past the 2024 season without some extensive and expensive maintenance. So staff really wants council feedback on, on if there's a line there, how much the council is willing to invest in the repairs, and at what dollar threshold council feels it's not physically responsible to put money into the pool. And for, for the discussion, if council is interested in putting the bond referendum on the ballot again, we would need some direction on that. Direction that we would want would include the project scope amount, number of questions that the propositions would be separated into. The earliest we could put this on the ballot again would be May. If we were going to do that, we'd have to be moving quickly to get that done. It's unlikely we'd be able to refine the, the prices or do anything really additional before having to authorize that to get on the May. So in, in that case, council might want to consider a, a bond committee to help evaluate in that project and get better feedback if they want to put that project back out on the bond, or out, on the ballot for a bond at a later date. So to summarize, the staff, the items staff's looking for direction was, first off, does council want to consider another bond referendum? And if so, in May, or do we have more time to consider that? And we can bring that back at a workshop or whatever. And then what is this, number two, what is the dollar threshold council feels is not physically feasible to keep the current pool running? We don't need any formal action, just direction for staff tonight.
Okay, discussion amongst council on this.
I have to say, my personal opinion on money that I would be, I would be willing to vote for to put into the pool is zero. That's my threshold. The pool is not, at this point, it's not worth spending good taxpayer dollars on something that is not fixable. It's, to me, it's throwing good money after a bad.
And you mean the current pool as it is?
Oh, yeah, the current pool, sorry. Oh, no, no, I'm not talking about a new pool. I think we definitely need a new pool, and it's an amenity I personally feel very strongly about being available here in Jersey Village. I'm talking about the current pool as current condition.
And even if we found somebody to somehow put Band-Aids on it, I'm not sure they could really guarantee the work for very long. So I agree, it doesn't seem like a good use of taxpayer money.
I don't feel like it is responsible to push anything into the May election. We will not have enough time. That was the whole problem that we had, is we rushed things. And I think that we should do a bond committee, not set any dollar amounts or anything today. We should do a bond committee, allow them to look and study this and put it on the November election.
I would agree with all of that. I don't think we should spend any additional monies on the pool as is. And I, I think we should give ourselves more time to get citizen input through a, a bond committee so we can target November election of next year.
The one part that I, I agree with 99% of what's being said. The one thing I would caution about, and I know people can be of two minds about this, the November election is going to be a presidential election, and it's very easy for stuff to get lost in there. You know, I, I, I just, I worry about, you know, the one good thing about when we had the bond election during this November election was, yeah, there were some constitutional amendments, and there was a school board election, but the ballot was relatively short. I know timing-wise, it kind of poses a problem if we were to go all the way to the following May because then you're talking about a whole other year after that. So we're talking about no pool for multiple years. But I, I think that if we want to have a, and maybe, maybe we do have a good conversation with people and we get that bond as, as narrowed down and really as responsive as possible so that it's not an issue. My only worry is going to be trying to have a conversation in the midst of an election is going to be very difficult, to say the least. It's going to be a madhouse. So, I mean, I, I get that that does come with some disadvantages, but that's just my, my initial thoughts.
Do you guys really feel like it's not feasible to do a bond committee and have it put on the ballot for May?
For May 2024? I don't think so, because we'd have to, Lori, when does, when do, when do we have to have something ready to go?
We'll probably need to call that election in the early part of February.
Yes, you've got about 70 days.
Makes sense. I just wanted to make sure we got that stated out loud and understood.
My thoughts on having it in the November election is we have a significantly higher turnout of residents in those elections, although busier, it would just be more citizen input, just other side of the coin.
It's just more work on us to make sure that we communicate it well.
I also think it would need to be discussed, I mean, or like, I don't know where, when we would talk about it, but, you know, about the pool being closed. I mean, it costs us money every single day that there was water sitting in it, seeping out. It's expensive. Water's not cheap.
Yeah, my only disappointment with, and it's realistic, I mean, that, that the May election would be too soon to get what we want to get done. And November, council member Mitchum raises a great point, it will increase turnout. I mean, there will be a lot of other noise, like presidentials and congressional's and everything else, but it just means that we have to educate, and maybe part of the bond committee can, can help do that. But anything after next November is just, we're just kicking the can down the road, and things will get a lot more expensive. And that, that's why I was hoping.
Oh, yeah, I agree. I would move further than that.
Earlier to get it done sooner. But in, in the event that doesn't pass in, in May due to lack of communication or whatnot of additional citizen input, then, then nothing would be spent anyway. So, yeah, I think November's probably the most realistic.
I agree.
The only way to make this happen in May is you, you split it up or strike out all the extra Clark Henry stuff. You do the pool only, and you do it for the middle price of, I think it was 10. Yeah, and it's, if you want to put it on the May election, I think that's how you have to do it.
Then let's wait for November. Do it right. Do the bond committee, get it done.
Yeah, I would say choices between, between rushing it to get it to May or dealing with the mayhem of November 2024, I'll, I'll take November.
Does that answer your question?
On the bond piece, yes. I just want to make sure that I'm clear that the council is not in favor of sticking extra money into the, the current pool if pumps go out or things go crazy, that we need to spend any extra money on the maintenance side of it. Council says, don't do it and close the pool down.
That, that would be my opinion.
I, 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 if we have some long-term rentals scheduled, I know the swim team uses the pool, I think it's one, to give them fair notice that they may need a backup on short notice, or what would it take to get through the end of their season is, is worth a discussion.
Yeah, that makes, that, that, that statement makes it sound like we're not willing to put a dollar towards it. Like, a couple hundred dollars, we're spending lots of money right now to keep it up. You could interpret that to, hey, let's close the pool today. I think we should use wise decision-making, depends on the cost. It really just depends on the cost. I agree, the swim team, if we can keep it open, that is a huge community event that if we can keep it open to the end of swim season, that'd be fantastic. After that, a lot less money towards the pool.
My one concern, Austin, is going to be, it's always dangerous to ask you to see the future. But my, my concern would be that if we say, okay, if it's a couple hundred dollars, we'll fix it. But if it's something major, and we already know there are major issues that exist already, it's just a question of how much worse can they get? It feels like a ticking time bomb that we're now asking, say, Jersey Village Stars to sort of commit to being there and not making alternative plans when at any moment we, our, our threshold may be met, and that might be it. I, I just.
Isn't that just the risk that, I mean, for anybody, I mean, I do, because I'll be, I don't feel like it's, it's fair to spend taxpayer money on something that is essentially, you know, how much money are we willing to put in what is essentially the trash? You know what I mean? I'm not saying there's not enjoyment and there's not value, but there also needs, I do feel that we'll, we need a hard stop on that.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think that the issue would be if it wasn't, if it was purely recreational. And maybe this is a discussion to have with the swim team. But my concern would be having, if anyone makes long-term plans that potentially precludes other things, I think suddenly getting to a point where something happens and we're like, we're just going to shut down, and they're left in, in a lurch. We at least need, I think, need to have a conversation with them to let them know that's what it is and, and to let, give, let them have an informed decision.
And not just swim team, but it's also, you know, residents, water aerobics, anybody that's wanting to buy a pool pass, they need to be fully aware of, like, this is, this is the risk we're taking this year. You know, the residents have spoken, they didn't want to spend the money, and I understand that.
I mean, that, that's a consideration too, parks and rec. We need, you buy it, we need to figure out how are we going to prorate it, how we refund if we're going to prorate it. I mean, is it a buy it your own risk type of thing? I mean, how do we go through those things? I mean, so I would expect.
Sticky.
In my opinion, I think the better option is just to let people know now, sorry, we, we just don't, there's too many risks. It's better to almost let people make plans, alternative plans, and say, well, we'll see you in 2025, hopefully, or 2026.
Yeah, wouldn't that be six?
Because I think we were hoping for 2025 if the bond had passed. So, yeah, see you in 2026, hopefully. Maybe. I mean, I hate to do it, but.
I know. And it's a, it's a difficult lesson of making sure you're aware and involved, but the bond didn't pass, and so, you know, it, it didn't pass. And so that, if, if they were very, very into it and ready for it, nothing to be, then they needed to be on the streets with us, you know, knocking on doors and educating people. And it just, it didn't, it didn't make its way that way, and this is just the natural fallout in the sweetest loving way. That's just the way the cards were dealt. in the sweetest loving way. That's just the way the cards were dealt.
So I, I, being a person who grew up on the water and in the water and involved with various, you know, pool activities. I don't know whether this emotion that I'm disagreeing with you or practicality, Bobby. It, it, it makes, so either way, it makes sense what you're saying. And I'm not arguing that it's worth a discussion, which I, but I also think that duct tape and bubble gum, but how much of that can you put into there?
And that's the thing, how much? Because it's, if, if there is a threshold, there's three members, yeah, through three members of council say, nope, I've hit my threshold. Then, and, and it's not like we can, like I said, it's always danger to ask to see the future. What are the odds that, you know, we hit a thousand, $2,000, $5,000 repair that is going into a pool that will at some point just be torn up? Again, I just, I hate, I hate to sit here with a, a time bomb that could blow up at any moment and varying degrees of plans could be screwed up at any moment. As opposed to being straight up with people now and saying, rather than have you plan and then blow that up, let you make other plans.
Well, I, I think my argument, and I'm finally coming up with it to that is, you know, if we fully inform everyone with what's going on and they can make backup plans and they can do whatnot. You know, we go out and we say, if something happens, it closes, so do this at your own risk. Watch it go all the way through next September. I mean, I, I'm just saying.
I know what you mean.
Completely agree that it could easily make it till next September. I also have a huge problem with, hey, let's just close, it's not going to work. You know, we're spending all this. That looks really bad in that we just said, hey, we need to do a bond election for the pool. The election failed, so we're going to close the pool? I know that's not the heart behind it, but that's how it's going to be interpreted. And I think we should continue to keep the pool open for as long as we can responsibly.
Well, I was going to suggest that a threshold that we consider is nothing over and above the maintenance that we've spent in the last two years.
And if, if there was a, like a pump that broke per se, it was a couple hundred dollars or a thousand dollars. I feel like we're, we're running before we're walking. Couldn't we go case by case or the situational when, when that time comes? I feel like preemptively saying nothing or, or all, I, I feel like if they have three meets left and they just have this one pump, that's a different story than things go totally haywire at the very beginning. I just feel like there's too many, I, I feel like when the problem comes, address it and we can decide the cost benefit of, of, of what it is.
I'm just going to say that this is posted as a bond item and it's, it does mention the pool and the item, so, but I think just make sure our discussion goes back to the bond.
Bonds in that bonded.
I guess to that point.
Six people didn't vote to spend their money, tax money via the bond.
But, I mean, we're getting so deep in the weeds, I, I feel like the city manager should run the pool. If he feels like he should come ask us about, hey, I have this, I need your advice, or I want to know what you think, he's really good about doing that. We don't need to discuss what that threshold is.
But I also, but I do think it's fair that, I do think it's fair for anybody that has intent to use the pool, making plans for that this summer, who, whether it be an individual person or it be an organization, be made aware in whatever means possible that there is potential for whatever this threshold is, you know, that there's, you know, you have to understand the pool is on its last leg and there's possibility of it not making it through the season. So just be aware of that.
Absolutely. They should be well aware of the risk they are taking by continuing to contract with us to, for the pool. It, it is a very, very high risk situation for them.
And I think that means what you're going to see is it's going to be, there are going to be no rentals, no swim team. It's going to be limited just to recreational only. And I guess with the premise that we probably would account for passes in some way, prorate or whatever, but we, if we need to, we can set an agenda item to, to get into more detail, but, you know, these are, unfortunately, these are all things that are sort of thrown into the lurch until we can figure out what we're going to do bond wise.
So every year we budget for pool maintenance and that includes things that come up that need replacing. Kind of where I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if we're going to exceed that dollar amount that's been budgeted, we stop there.
For me personally, I, I kind of almost prefer the ad hoc basis, because I, yeah, also just to, I'll take Justin's advice a little bit and just say that to really get into more detail, I feel like we probably would need to have a, a separate line item or a separate agenda item to.
Yeah, can we discuss this in, I just forgot what month it was, December? Like, can we put that on the agenda and have a pool discussion and maybe a little further or January or February, whatever?
That makes sense to me. December's usually a light agenda, so. Okay, any, any further discussion about the bonds?
One thing about the streets, are we in contact? Oh, I guess it would wait till we get planning done for it as opposed to when the best time to shut down the block of Congo east of Solomon and.
We'll, we'll engage the transportation department at the schools probably relatively quickly, just to say, this is where we're at. This is kind of where we're at in the planning. This is where, you know, we think we'd, we'd be starting, just to keep them in the loop or get them in the loop.
Okay. Unless anyone else had any other questions on bonds, I'm going to move along. Okay, that brings us to item G4, Consider Ordinance Number 2023-29, Amending the General Fund Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1st, 2022 and Ending September 30th, 2023, in the Amount Not to Exceed $2,242,878 to amend various line items from the general fund balance in order to provide for the over-budget line items and required additional products. Isabel Cado, Finance Director.
Yes. Okay, so, we are, every year before the audits, we do this budget amendment for, to take care of the line items that are over budget. We also, this $2.2 million isn't not necessarily that we're taking $2.2 million out of the fund balance. We're transferring from one line item to the other. We're also requesting to transfer $1 million from the general fund to the capital improvement funds. So for future projects in future years, but we want to start saving the money now. That's why we want to transfer those $1 million. We also have a big line item of $848,000, more or less, that's for the payments to C-MEX and the, and the other, the other economic development that because of the property, the sales taxes being so high, the payments are high. So it's a good thing to have because we had an increase in collections for sales taxes.
Okay, great. And ju, just to preempt that and, and make it absolutely clear, I, I think what I'm hearing Isabel is this is not about spending more money, this is just cleaning up some of the bookkeeping at the end of the fiscal year to make sure everything is where it's supposed to be.
Correct. And, and the big one was the $1 million that we're saving and the eight, over $800,000 that that's for the payments that we did for the economic development. But the payment is the amount went over budget because we collected more sales taxes, so we had to pay them more.
It's a good problem, yes. Okay, discussion amongst council on this item.
Austin, where did we put those marquee signs in?
First ones were 2020 and the most recent ones were last year. They come with the standard one-year warranty. What we've seen, we, we were told they should last five years and we have definitely not, not seen that. The new ones that we're proposing to get, we would look at buying the extra extended warranty on there. The person that works on them locally says typically see them last seven to 10 years. So it's a whole new, different type of, it's a different screen than what's in there today. What we have today is really just like a TV screen. These ones are more of your outdoor panels like you see at sports stadiums and those types of things.
I'm really kind of frustrated myself for these, because they, they did not last long.
If only lemon law applied to these, right?
One comment, and I'm not, it, it pertains because there's several pages of budget amendments. Is there a way we can clean up that form and make it a little more explicit without too much more work on staff?
We can look into that for sure.
But overall, I have, if, if this is cleanup and to, for transparency, for look backs and it's, and for audits, I, I, I fully endorse what's going on and just, you know, if we can catch it earlier. But it's a month into the fiscal, new fiscal year, so I think this is appropriate.
Yeah, and this is to close out the last fiscal year.
If there's not any further discussion, I'd entertain a motion at this time.
Move that we approve ordinance 2023-29.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all of those in favor? All of those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. That brings us to item G5, Consider Ordinance 2023-30, Amending the Capital Replacement Fund Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1st, 2023 and Ending September 30th, 2024, in the Amount Not to Exceed $270,000 by Increasing Revenue Line 0771-9804, Sales of Assets, Fire Department, in the Amount of $45,000, 0772-6574, Vehicles, Fire Department, in the Amount of $95,000, or there was, there was a comma off there? I just want to make sure I get that right. Is it 950,000 or is it 95,000 with an, an extra zero on there?
It has an extra zero.
I'm going to err on the side of a higher number.
It has an extra zero.
It's an extra zero? Okay, so it is 95,000? Okay. To address typographical errors, now that's ironic there, to address typographical errors that were identified after the adoption of the Capital Replacement Fund and 0773-6573, Computer Equipment to Allocate $130,000 for the replacement of the screen of the four marquees. Isabel Cado.
Okay, so what, we were doing accounts payable this year, we noticed that the, in the, in the schedules for the capital, for the vehicle replacement, we had a $95,000 that were in, that were in the schedule, but they were not included in, in the, in INCO. So also we have $45,000 that we are expected to collect for vehicle sales that, for sale of, of assets that were not, that were included in the schedule, but they were not included in INCO. So this ordinance is like to clean up that part in, in INCO. It also require, we are requesting $130,000 for the replacement of the screens of the four marquees in the Capital Replacement Fund.
Okay, discussion amongst council.
I move to approve ordinance 2023-30.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council?
I just want to verify that the typo will be corrected before it's actually done. On the nine, I, I just want to make sure that's corrected because as stated, it's $950,000 and not $95,000.
In the ordinance, it's correct.
So the 95,000 is correct?
It's just the subject, right? Not the actual ordinance.
On the agenda item that, that's wrong, but in the ordinance, it is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to get clarification that that is, since we've had some issues.
I appreciate the heightened attention to making sure numbers are correct in ordinances. I, I get the feeling that'll, that'll be a valuable habit carrying forward. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from council before we vote? Seeing none, all of those in favor? Those against? Any abstentions? The ordinance passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to mayor and council comments. I'm going to start down here with Mayor Pro Tim Mitchum.
I hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving. This is my favorite time in JV when all the lights go up, especially looking at you Singapore for Candy Cane Lane. I'll take candy corn for October, but Candy Cane gets December. We're going to do our annual hayride where we, all of the kiddos from Post Elementary hop on, I think we take up three hayrides now. And we've chosen a couple families that we're going to carol. We do it the last Thursday before they get let out. So I believe that's the 21st of December. So if you are available that day, come out on your front lawn. It is adorable to hear about 100 kids wailing. Yeah, Feliz Navidad. It's exceptional.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Our next community event is Holiday in the Park. That's Saturday, right? December 2nd. So come on out and enjoy.
Councilmember Wasson.
And that is followed promptly by a parade at 7:15, Parade of Lights. So I look forward to seeing that and sounds like, I guess the next other big city event that we have before the next council meeting, official council meeting is Grinch on the 16th. Apropos perhaps for all the discussion we've had tonight.
Councilmember Singleton.
Yeah, the Holiday in the Parks coming up, there'll be a riveting work session on water meters for anybody that would like to attend. Hopefully it's very productive. Looking forward to it. And the Grinch.
Councilmember Crane.
I just wanted to say that this is the, this whole water meter situation has been the first time I've actually seen a lot more involvement from citizens as far as communication via the channels that we're legally allowed to respond to. And, and I do appreciate that. That's just, I appreciate the involvement and the feedback, even if we may not agree, it's, you know, it's, it's helpful. So, that's mine.
Just wait till you propose a left turn. No left turn, no one wants. Sorry, I'm kidding. That's. I hope everyone had a very happy Thanksgiving. Just echo what everyone else said. There's a lot of really great events, so I would definitely encourage you to dig out and enjoy them. So that's all I have. So let's see, we are going to move into executive session. City council is now going to retire to a closed session at 8:22 PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations with Attorney and Consultation with the Following Item, Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Section 551.071, Consultations with Attorney. A closed meeting to deliberate information from a business prospect the city seeks to locate in Jersey Village Terre Number Two and economic development negotiations including the possible purchase, exchange, or value of real property related thereto. We will return to open session and continue with the reminder, remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded.
Okay, the closed session was adjourned at 8:56 PM and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. Uh, let's see, there is an item here. It says, "L1, discuss and take appropriate action on items discussed in executive session regarding information from a business prospect that the city seeks to locate in Jerseyville is terms number two in economic development negotiations including the possible purchase exchange or value of real property related thereto." And I believe that there is no action for us to take. All right, here are no objections, therefore, meeting adjourned.